The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed,
Here.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, twenty-one press.
Quorum being present. I'll ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand, please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourteenth?
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce as my honored guest, Demetrius Alfred, President of Firefighters Local Seventy-three, and Dr. Caressa Morrow, Principal of Hickey Elementary School, formerly Principal of Oak Hill Elementary School.
Alderman from the twenty-second?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have two honored guests, Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T, and someone who's been absent for awhile, Mr. Leroy Grant, also with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from the seventh?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm honored to have as my special guest today Susan Troutman, the Executive Director of Great Rivers Greenway.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest Nathan Lett and Dan Clark from Firefighters Local Seventy-three, and Linda Thomas, who's here somewhere, who's retired from City of St. Louis Department of Personnel, and Ken Mitchell from Local Seventy-three also.
Alderman from the sixteenth?
You, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia with the AGC of Missouri, and Annie Schweitzer, a former Sixteenth Ward resident.
Any further introductions, any further inductions? We also have with us today John Dieters. Thanks for coming out today, John. And for any of you who is interested in what Principal Morrow is doing, it'd be good if you can have a quick conversation with her before she exits today. We're expecting some great things out of that school with her leading it up. Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm sorry. I just saw a great friend of mine. I wanted to introduce her, take a minute to introduce her. Former State Senator Reda Days, and former head of the St. Louis County Board of Elections, Reda Days.
Oh, yeah. Snuck in on this, Reda. Any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on June tenth, which for all you folks who are really concerned is National Ballpoint Pen Day, which is sheer excitement. But if you're wondering why I'm wearing this suit, Alderman Conway and I were at Dave Sweeney's house this week and went through his clothes. He had a yard sale. Conway bought his grade school outfit and I bought his high school outfit. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the eighteenth, recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the May twenty-seventh meeting.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from as honor the mayor, the following correspondents. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Soldiers Memorial Commission, the appointment of Mr. Bruce B. Yampolsky, who resides in the Seventeenth Ward, and whose term will expire on May twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Soldiers Memorial Commission?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move we accept the appointment for the Soldiers Memorial Commission, Bruce Yampolsky.
Move by Alderman from the ninth, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to take Board Bill sixty-five, remove it from the informal calendar and put it on the perfection calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Put Board Bill number sixty-five at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill seventy-one, sponsored by Alderman Crewson, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a lease agreement between the city and Southwest Airlines, granting to the listed subject to and in accordance with the terms, covenants, and conditions of the lease agreement, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-two, sponsored by Alderman Crewson, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute space permit number AL-016 between the city and Delta Airlines, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill seventy-three, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-five-twenty-five Illinois. Board Bill seventy-four, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for thirty-one-twenty-seven Shenandoah, containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventy-five, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for eight-oh-one through twenty-five. And Board Bill seventy-six, sponsored by Alderman Green, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for thirty-nine-thirty-five through thirty-seven Wyoming, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventy-seven, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-six-thirty-seven through fifty-one Washington. Board Bill seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight-thirty-nine Indiana. Board Bill seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine-forty-four Michigan. Board Bill eighty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property from J. Industrial District to the G. Local Commercial and Office District for properties on Le Cleed Avenue and Spring Avenue, and containing an emergency clause. That's Board Bill eighty-one, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the execution of a cooperation agreement regarding the property commonly known as seven-oh-five Olive, and authorizing reimbursement in accordance herewith, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
All right. Alderman from the first, you recognize?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move to suspend the rules. I have four bills here. Do you want me to take them separately or?
No, you can move to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five.
Eighty-four and eighty-five, right. Okay. Yes, Mr. President, I'm moved to suspend the rules to introduce, for the purposes of introducing Board Bill eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the first, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any further discussion?
No, Mr. President.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed,
Aye.
Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French, Alderman Carter, twenty-three aye vote.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bills eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five on the first reading calendar and read the introduction.
Board Bill eighty-two, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance to vacate all commercial driveway apron and/or curb cuts that abut the front roadway known as forty-nine-hundred Block of Terry, and prohibiting any new commercial driveways, aprons, and/or curb cuts from being constructed or permits to be constructed, permits to construct a commercial driveway apron and/or curb cuts from being issued, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-three, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance pertaining to commercial traffic and commercial semi-service trucks prohibiting such traffic along certain portions of Terry, exempting from prohibition emergency vehicles, including tow trucks when providing service to non-commercial vehicles, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-four, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the five thousand through fifty-two-hundred blocks of Lotus Avenue as Lou Father Times Avenue. Board Bill eighty-five, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance pertaining to vendors, prohibiting street vendors within the City of St. Louis, except, within designating vending districts, establishing vending districts within the City of St. Louis, prohibiting vending on any LRA-owned property, promulgating rules and regulations for vending within vending districts, containing definitions, a penalty clause, a severability clause, and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill number eighty-one to HUDs.
So noted.
Board Bills eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five to streets.
Eighty-two, eighty-three?
Eighty-four and eighty-five to streets.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Housing Committee, Board Bills eighty and eighty-one. To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills seventy-one and seventy-two. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. And to the Streets Committee, Board Bills eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Dispense with line items thirteen and fourteen, perfection. Move, Madam Clerk, please move Board Bill number fifty-seven as amended to the regular perfection calendar. It's fifty-seven as amended.
So noted.
Alderman from the nineteenth?
Mr. President and members of the board, I'd like to request that Board Bill number sixty-four be moved to the informal calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please move Board Bill number sixty-four to the informal calendar, to the perfection informal calendar at the request of the sponsor.
So noted.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Perfection consent.
Board Bill thirty as amended, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and ordinance pertaining to vendors on the wharf, repealing ordinance six-one-three-six-two, and enacting a new ordinance establishing the process of soliciting vendors for said area, establishing a wharf vending district, and establishing a riverfront vending district committee. Board Bill forty-one as amended, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate travel on a northern one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-foot section of the north-south alley in City Block Thirty-two-ten, as bounded by Davis, Michigan, Herc, and Virginia. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Mr. President, I move for adoption perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill fifty-five, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Carter, and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission of making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment, and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreements involving the parking division assets and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall, Information Technologies Office, Argyle Parking, Shoto Parking, Williams Paper Parking, Central Downtown Parking, Buckingham Parking, Couples and Justice Parking, for the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and sixteen, and ending June the thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of sixteen million, six hundred and, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number fifty-five?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. I have a floor substitute that I would like to introduce.
First you have to move for perfection of this one, then we introduce.
I'm sorry, let me move for perfection of Board Bill fifty-five.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Now you have a floor substitute, so would you, is it on everyone's desk?
Yes, sir, it should be on everyone's desk.
You'd like to make a motion for the introduction of the floor substitute for Board Bill number fifty-five?
Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion for that, for the floor substitute of Board Bill fifty-five.
The introduction of floor substitute, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the fifteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, would you like to make a motion to perfect the floor substitute?
Yes, sir, we took this bill up and, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion.
To perfect?
Make a motion to perfect it, I'm sorry.
Floor substitute?
Floor substitute fifty-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Alderman from the twenty-seventh, please proceed.
Yes, sir, we took this board bill up in the Streets Committee and we ran a list short on time, and so this is just one simple change. We changed, the total impact on the Parking Division's budget with this revision would be fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars above original requested amount that we had approved for the committee. So minor change.
All right, thanks. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, we adopt floor substitute, that we perfect floor substitute for Board Bill number fifty-five. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Board Bill sixty-five, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Arnowitz, and ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the city and all employees under the classified service, repealing ordinance six-nine-nine-four-nine, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, specifically superseding any and all provisions of the Police Manual and/or special orders of the Police Division, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number sixty-five?
Yes, Mr. President, I move for perfection for Board Bill sixty-five.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Alderman, please proceed. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This bill was held up for awhile. It did pass out in the Public Employees Committee. Couple of snags that we did have on this bill in Section Twenty-nine in dealing with the Police Manual. It was some discussion between personnel and also City Council dealing with this manual. So legal terms, they have two different opinions, and I think right now as the bill is structured, is that Human Resources, the director can supersede into that manual. And City Council disagrees with that. So we're gonna have to circle back and kind of discuss that and deliberate it on future meetings through public employees. The second holdup was dealing with the police officers too. Now, as you know, all the police officers that graduate out of the academy are making thirty-two-thousand dollars a year. Once they graduate now, they will make forty-one thousand. Also, those police officers will be able to make overtime if they work one-hundred-and-seventy-one hours over a month. Now, and that's a good thing, no problem with that. The problem is when the ranking members of the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains are not able to make overtime on the Police Department. So that's another discussion in talking to Local Seventy-three, City Council, and Human Resources. We're gonna have to circle back and solve that problem. Because as it is right now, you know your fire department, your lieutenants and captains can receive overtime, but the Police Department can't. So there is an ordinance, a parity ordinance that we have in effect, it's been in effect for years. Was ever good for the fire departments, good for the police. Was ever good for the Police Departments, good for the fire. So it's supposed to be a level playing field for both of those departments. It's supposed to be a parity in effect. So that's what held the bill up, but with that I renew my motion.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Just touch a little further, and also with the discussions that we had between the City Councilor's office, Mayor's office, and Personnel the other day, they agreed they didn't want to hold the pay bill up for employees based on language. I think it's something, they need to get together and figure out which language is correct, whether it be the version of the Department of Personnel or the Police State Manual. So, and I think that's just where the communication is, but I just found it awful funny that, you know, there was a hearing from the Civil Service Commission on the bill, no one opposed it. First read out of committee, when he had the committee hearing, no one opposed it. And for them to tell me they found it at six-thirty a.m. in the morning last Friday, I find it a little far-reaching because, as we all know, bills are available to anyone. So I'm urging everyone to support this. I don't think it's fair to hold the monies up under collective bargaining, also four-hundred-and-something-plus city employees in the trades. Last year, you remember, it was held up over the title and the pay over the police chief last year. So I'm urging everyone to support this, and we've agreed that we will look at the bill again if the language needs to be changed. It's really, and it doesn't affect the pay bill itself. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion of the perfection of Board Bill number sixty-five? Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize the close?
Yes, Mr. President. Pretty much just like the Alderman from the twelfth stated. We really don't have enough time to change the bill, because as you know, July one is approaching, it is a fiscal year, and so we're on short notice. And just like he also said, the last thing we wanted to do is hold this bill up for all the rest of the city employees when it comes to the local unions and what have, it just would be unfair. So in saying that in short, I renew my motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill number sixty-five. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Board Bill fifty-seven as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Aldermen and Alderwomen, Vaccaro, Howard, Valmer, Conway, Murphy, Behringer, Arnowitz, and Kennedy, and ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election on November the eighth, two thousand and sixteen, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors a proposal to levy and collect a property tax of five cents per each, one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for the purpose of providing services to persons aged sixty or older.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number fifty-seven
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage.
No, it's a perfection of Board fifty-seven as amended.
I move for perfection of Board Bill number fifty-seven as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Alderman, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the eleventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. May I inquire of the Alderman from the eighth, please?
Alderman from the eighth, will you yield for questioning to the Alderman from the
Morning.
Morning.
Will you yield for questioning for the Alderman?
Yes, I'm yielding.
Alderman from the eleventh, please proceed.
How much money will this generate?
It's, I think it's five cents per hundred dollar assessed, and I can't do the math real quick. Two million dollars a year.
Two million dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is gonna go on our constituents' real estate tax bill, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what kind of onus did we put on the real estate taxes in the last six
The, let's see, two things. One is, we didn't do it, but the School Board put a very large one on just recently. And then with respect to the general obligation bond issue, that was a push. It was, your bill wasn't going up for what we did with the, for the capital improvements. But the St. Louis Public School ones, I think, was seventy-five cents per hundred dollar assessed. But that was not this Board of Aldermen.
No, and in effect, I guess if we're looking to wash our hands of it, the people in effect have imposed that on themselves. They had the ability to go to the polls and vote them up or vote them down. But we have in fact, the real estate tax bills, and as we all know, the electorate, they're a funny group, and we'll go to our neighborhood meetings after the first of the year, and they're gonna want to know why their real estate tax bills have gone up considerably.
It'll be Thanksgiving, you don't want to go to your neighborhood meetings.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you for the premonition. I appreciate that. But I can just tell you that in houses along my block, it's gonna be anywhere from six hundred dollars and up.
That is correct. I mean, that was a significant increase, and I know a number of people here on the board supported it. But the public voted for it, and they had the information. You know, we didn't vote for that.
I understand, and I was certainly tried to assist the Board of Education, because they convinced me it was the right thing to do, but it's a big hit. I, let me, I'll just cut to the quick here. So we're gonna create this fund and create another board. What, do we have any idea what they're gonna do with the money? And it's hard to be against, you know, senior citizens, because obviously I'm in that group. Is there any way I can benefit from this?
I, the key concept here is, is to provide up to two million dollars a year for the not-for-profit organization. a year for the not-for-profit organizations that give us senior citizen support. And so they'll, they'll do a grant process, and they will allocate the funds. All right. So, I'm ready.
Oh.
Any other questions?
No, I, I was just looking at the whereas clause. We wanna become an age-friendly city. Uh, we've already got, we're, now we're monarch butterfly friendly. Uh, the chickens lost out. We're not gonna be friendly.
They did.
We're not gonna be friendly to the chickens. Yeah, I just, it, let me, what, wasn't there a similar proposal in front of the St. Louis County Council?
That part, I, 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 you know, and, um, Alderman, I was pressed in a little, um, service due to my expertise and seniority this morning to handle this bill. So, I think, I normally, if it was something that I drafted and had my hands all over it, I could give it. I know, uh, Bill Seedorf had come to us some time ago. Uh, conceptually, I, I was supportive of the idea. I remember when we used to have senior home security, when they would provide some emergency window barred up, you know, installation. There, there was a number of things that our seniors could use that aren't really all that expensive, and, uh, some support services. Um, and I know that, yes, the tax is going up, um, significantly on everybody's real estate tax bill. But to put it in perspective, this tax is one fifteenth the size of what the St. Louis Public Schools, um, put on you, um, or the people put on themselves, um, back in April.
No, I, I just, uh, does anybody know what St. Louis County did with this similar proposal?
It has been told to me, Mr. President, that St. Louis County has put it on their ballot, too, for November.
Is this going to be, and again, Alderman, I, I'm asking, anybody can answer these. I, I understand you were just, uh, rushed into battle with, uh, not much, uh, you know, maybe not ever having seen this before. Um, I mean, we're, we're giving a board, and, and we all know how these boards are get created. Um, there is a board, the, the Board of Adjustment, uh, if, anybody follow their meanderings lately? You, you realize the Board of Adjustment writes more laws than we do. They're, uh, in my humble opinion, completely out of control. Uh, they closed, they just, uh, negated some parking on a street in my ward, uh, in a church. It's only, it's only been a church for seventy-five years. A new pastor comes in, and by God, you know what he wants to use the church for? A church. And they just decided they'd negate some parking, and it's been a church as long as I've been, uh, been around. My point is that, you know, these boards, you're giving two million dollars a year to a group of people, and, and, uh, I'm sure there won't be any politics involved as to who we put on the board or how the board spends the money. And, and again, it, it, it's very, very difficult to be against our seniors cause I have a whole bunch of them down in the southeast corner of the city. But I just, uh, I just thought I would, you know, send up a flag, what we're doing here. And again, it's going to go to a vote of the people. But our real estate tax percentages are getting very, very high. And I think it's, uh, you know, it's not very hard to go out and find a cause if, in fact, we can then go to the people and get a constant stream of revenue to placate their needs, cause there's lots of needs. I mean, I, I, I mean, why don't I create a, a thing? I mean, I need fifty-one buildings in my ward. I'm sounding like the Alderman from the Fourth. But I have about fifty buildings I need wrecked. I need, I would like to have a very special fund to do that. So, uh, I, I just, uh, I don't know. I'm probably in a bad mood, and I should sit down and shut up. But, uh, the fact of the matter is, you know, real estate taxes are a real thing, a real source of revenue. And, and I think we need to be very careful if, in fact, this is created, uh, to who we put on the board and how we monitor their activities and how they spend their money. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the First?
President, members of the board, I'd like to echo, uh, the Alderman from the Eleventh in that, um, so in doing the pay bill research, I actually went back and read Supreme Court cases. And as we legislate and we give our, um, we give our authority over to these boards, we don't reserve anything for ourselves. So, once we do this, if we pass this, that, we only get a chance to vote up, vote no, or make recommendations and send back. I would suggest that we need an amendment in here that allows the Board of Aldermen, if we wanna make changes to do it. Cause otherwise, we're giving over just another. I don't know if time is of the essence, if we have to get this passed now. But I am gonna vote present because I, after reading, um, and finding out about all the, uh, Supreme Court cases that say, once we give our power over, then we don't have it. We already have that problem with the budget right now. I would not be in favor of giving any more of our power. We're a, we're a powerful board that we don't use our power already. So, I would suggest that, uh, we have an amendment to this if it can be held back for, uh, 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 one, um, week that says that we can make changes to this bill. I mean, to, when they, uh, when the senior committee, for, uh, lack of a better term right now, makes a recommendation, if we see they're giving everything to one or two organizations, and we think that's unfair, that we be able to, uh, make some changes.
Spread it out, so.
Right, exactly.
To be able to adjust the budget.
Exactly, exactly. And right now, the way that's written, if we get this passed, we will not be able to do that. That's just my own recommendation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the Eighth, the, you recog- you recognize?
I renew my motion.
Okay, it's, um... Alderman from the First, you were just making a recommendation. You, you didn't have any specific?
I don't, I don't have anything, um, specifically written out, but I'm, that's why I'm asking, do we need to get it passed? Because I can write something up, because I would have, uh, the Alderman from the Eighth and the President read these Supreme Court rulings from Missouri Supreme Court. Once we give our power away, we give it away. Then, with, right now, the Civil Service has a chunk of our power, the Board of Adjustment has a chunk of our power, the mayor got something changed when it was Mayor Shamel. So, it, it has a chunk of our power for ways and means. How much do we want to give up without having some control? We always complain about that budget. So, if we have time to make the change, I would not submit this like that. But I don't have anything written up right now, so.
Okay. All right. Uh, could you answer the question related to the budget and how their budget is set?
Has to be approved by the Board of Aldermen.
So, right, so the Board of Aldermen does approve the budget?
Have him for it. And, uh, we do not have to approve the budget.
All right, all right. Thank you. Alderman from the First?
I'm sorry. The same thing with the pay scale, okay? We can vote up, we can vote down, or we can recommend changes and send it back. We can't make the changes ourself. That's the same thing. Uh, we got a little bit more leeway with the, uh, budget in that we can take stuff out, but we cannot add anything. And I'm saying that if there is time to get this thing, even if we have to suspend the rules, we ought to reserve in writing our power. It is better safe than sorry. The Alderman is very right from the Eleventh when he talks about that we're giving away a lot of our power, because the courts have ruled, once we say, uh, that we can, uh, vote it up or down, that we can't, and if we don't put in there, we can make changes, we don't get to make changes. We have to send it back to them. And that's just, uh, a bit too much power to give away from me.
All right, thank you, thank you. Alderman from the Nineteenth?
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I just wanted to kinda add a little bit to think about. Um, this is simple for me to vote yes, because it's up to the qualified voter to determine whether or not this will be in effect. They either voted up or down, and so that is not the onus of us. But I would like to say that we probably should not create another board or entity, because we got too many of them now. We don't have too much control over, and they're just doing what they wanna do with the money. And if we could do anything, if we could send the money to one of the services that we know is competent and qualified, like senior home security for emergency services, and that's where it's really needed. When somebody has an emergency and they don't have enough money in the till, but they have this set aside, and that's what it would be used for. So, we've, we've got all these agencies, St. Louis area on agents, uh, senior home security, and they go on and on, that provide senior services. So, creating another entity to make decisions just kinda complicates all of it. And we already allocate money through your block grant funds to those various agencies as well. And so, I'm, I'm just, I, I don't need the complication. I don't know about anybody else. But I would rather see those funds be, uh, designated for emergencies, rather than people have to wait three or four months. Uh, and we can also indicate, uh, based on those who are providing those services for years and doing a good job, what those listed services should be. So, and, and I think that might help people have a better feel about it as well. Not just, I want some more money to put somewhere for another program. So, uh, it's just something to think about when, if you're gonna do an amendment, it's something to think about. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the Eighth, you recognize?
Mr. President, I just wanna point out in Section Eight, um, that this specifically says, um, the, uh, except that the budget for the, the fund shall be approved by the Board of Aldermen prior to making any payments from the fund in any fiscal year. So, you know, we have a yea or nay. We can't say, well, spend a little bit more on, um, this program for the Eighth Ward, or take a little bit of money out of this program that's gonna benefit the Eighth Ward. But we have a yea or nay, um, say so before they're allowed to spend a penny.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the Eighth, second by Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth, that we perfect Board Bill Number Fifty-seven as amended. Uh, there's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kultur, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vocaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Kennedy. Twenty-three, aye votes, one no vote, one present.
By a vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the Eighth and perfected Board Bill Number Fifty-seven as amended.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Alderman from Twenty-Six, you recognize?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to, to suspend the, um, the, uh, rules for Board Bill Sixty-Five and have it placed on the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the Twenty-Six that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill Number Sixty-Five to the third reading consent calendar. Would anyone else like to add their bills to that list? It's been moved by Alderman from the, from the Twenty-Six, second by Alderman from the Twelfth. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kultur, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French. Did we say aye? Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vocaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Spencer. Twenty-four, aye votes, no no vote.
By a vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from Twenty-Six and move Board Bill Number Sixty-Five to the third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Number Sixty-Five at the tail end of the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills Thirty-Five Committee Substitute, Forty-Five Eleven Thirty-Two Fifty-One as amended, and Sixty-Five.
Alderman from the Twenty-First, you recognize on the third reading consent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass, uh, the third read consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the Twenty-F, Twenty-First, entertained a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the Seventh. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kultur, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vocaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Kennedy. Twenty-four, aye votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the Twenty-First and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading reported in groceries.
Board Bill Number Forty, sponsored by Alderwomen and Aldermen, Spencer, Cruzen, Vocaro, Ogilvy, Howard, Carter, Green, Williamson, Ortman, and Cone. An ordinance pertaining to drug-related overdoses and medical assistance, immunity from prosecution for possession or control, and containing definitions and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the Twentieth, you recognize on the third reading and finally passage of Board Bill Number Forty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Forty.
Moved by Alderman from the Twentieth, second by Alderman from the Twenty-Fifth. Any discussion? Alderman from the, Alderman from the Twenty-First?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we had a, a long discussion about this last week, and I won't really repeat too much of what I said. Uh, I, again, will be voting present on this. Um, but, uh, you know, I think we often pass legislation down here that is, uh, well-intentioned and sometimes feel-good legislation. Uh, but under no circumstances should we falsely lead people to believe that we are offering immunity immunity in the city of St. Louis for this. It is still up to the officer who shows up. Many cases, the officer will still charge under state law and not charge under the city ordinance, but the state law is really the one that people most fear because it often comes with much heavier penalties than the city ordinance. And so I think effective immunity only comes when people know 100% that if they put themselves out there, that the law protects them, and that is not what this ordinance does. We still have to continue to push the state legislature to do the right thing and give the same equal protection to everybody, every citizen, regardless of what county they're in, regardless of what officer shows up, regardless of the mood of the individual officer, and really regardless of any prejudice that the different officers may have. So again, my fear is that we are creating a situation where a certain class of folks are going to be treated differently than others. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twentieth, you recognize to close.
Thank you. In closing, I'd like to remind the Board that the purpose of the bill is to direct the police department as the employer of the city, St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department. We're directing them what they should be doing. The Alderman from the twenty-first is absolutely right. This should be handled at the state level. There are thirty-six states that have Good Samaritan overdose prevention measures in place at the state level. If we are to wait for the state of Missouri to act in the best interests of the citizens of the city of St. Louis, we will be waiting until we are all dead. And so for that reason, I think it's incumbent upon this body to pass measures that we can and do exactly what we can and to the utmost of what we can as a legislative body to ensure the safety and the best interests of the citizens that we represent. And in doing so, by passing Board Bill Forty, what we will be doing is directing our police department to be acting fairly and justly across the board and to be providing immunity when applicable to patient, to people who are expecting, or excuse me, experiencing a medical emergency, overdose situation. It's not perfect. We don't operate in a perfect system, and we certainly don't exist within a perfect state. But given those restraints and those constraints, I think this is the best that we can offer. And so for that reason, I'm hoping that we can pass Board Bill Number Forty and look to St. Louis County and surrounding areas to join with us, not only on the prescription drug monitoring drug database that should be done at the state level, but at safeguards like this that will protect our, some of our most vulnerable citizens in their times of most vulnerability.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved by Alderwoman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Forty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingraccia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Boyd. Twenty-three, aye votes, one present.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twentieth, and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Forty.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills Thirty-five Committee Substitute, Forty-five, Eleven, Thirty-two, Fifty-one as amended, Forty, and Sixty-five.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, affix his signature here to the end that these may become law. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolution calendar.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the courtesy resolution count.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain the second on that motion, second by Alderman from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading resolution.
Resolution Forty-nine sponsored by Alderman Valmer Enterprise Zone for Fifty-Fifty-One Southwest LLC.
Alderman from the eleventh, you recognize on first reading resolution number forty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that Board Resolution Number Forty-nine be assigned to our Housing Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eleventh, entertain the second on that motion, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? Been moved, moved, second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Resolution Fifty sponsored by Alderman Villa Enterprise Zone for Intagro, Intagro Granny Elevator Company.
All right. Alderman from the tenth, would you like to handle that?
I have to quit dressing like you. They're starting to confuse us, Thomas. Requested Resolution Number Fifty be sent to HUDs. Thank you.
Been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertain the second on that motion, second by Alderman from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Clerk, please sign Resolution Number Fifty to HUDs.
So noted.
Alderman from the eleventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I made the motion on the Alderman Valmers, and I can't use his last name, so.
Yeah.
Because at eleven-thirty, he has to get Bill McCone his suit back. So that's why I thought. Mr. President, I'd like to move that Board Resolution Number, why isn't the Alderman from the ninth making this motion? Want me to make it?
No. Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on Resolution Number Fifty-One.
Mr. President, we're now on Fifty-One.
We're on Fifty-One.
I was trying to follow this. It's kind of confusing. I recommend that Resolution Fifty-One be sent to HUDs.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the Resolution Fifty-One, just the title.
Resolution Fifty-One sponsored by Alderman Ortman Enterprise Zone for S T C Warehouse Incorporated.
It's been moved by Alderman from the ninth, I'll entertain the second on that motion, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution Number Fifty-One to HUDs.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second readings.
We have none.
Miss Lane's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, June the thirteenth, one o'clock P.M., a personnel committee meeting in the leisure room. The meeting will be closed to the public under provisions of Section Six One Oh Point Zero Two One of Missouri Revised Statute in order to permit the members of the committee to discuss personnel matters. Wednesday, June the fifteenth, Ways and Means Committee meeting at nine o'clock in the leisure room. Friday, June the seventeenth, full board meeting, ten A.M. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the tenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. This Sunday, June twelfth, is the annual St. Louis J.C. Soapbox Derby, taking place on Mackland Avenue, starting at Botanical and ending at Barrow Park. There'll be a car show, there'll be a band, there'll be food, there'll be beverages, there'll be a lot of fun, so come down to the hill. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you. I move that we excuse the following Alderman.
No, we're still on announcements. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, yesterday, a very sad event happened in the first ward. A business owner was shot in my ward. Steve and I had just met a few weeks ago because he was having problems up at that store at Anderson and Shreve, and we are, I just wanted to announce that, we are going to have a public safety meeting Tuesday, what is that date? June the fourteenth, is that? Yeah, it's June the fourteenth at the Wesley House at six-thirty P.M. to talk about some of the issues that's been going on. Steve was a very nice young man. He had been in that spot, Sam's Packard's, for a long time, but the crowd had become increasingly loud and boisterous, and I had had a lot of calls from the surrounding residents to do something about that store. And I had met with him, and we had a very cordial conversation about, "Look, we cannot have this going on here because it's really destroying the rest of the community, and although you're a nice person, a lot of times the corner stores end up being something like an attractive nuisance. It's like having a swimming pool, and it attracts the wrong kind of crowd, and it really can get out of hand." And I wanted to just say a prayer for him and his family, and, but we still have to address that issue because my community is very upset about that. And so we are meeting Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, at Wesley House at six-thirty to discuss the issue of the store and what public safety, what public safety resolutions we can do to try to prevent some of the things that are happening at, not only that store, but some other corner stores that tend to have problems. And we need to, I actually have been working on legislation about designating certain properties as attractive nuisances, just as you would a swimming pool, and to have ways that we can address this issue, starting with moving, removing the liquor, removing the tobacco, and removing enough stuff until we have a clientele that can go there and enjoy that you got a corner store and not have a clientele that thinks it's all right to drive up and shoot somebody, or drive up and cuss people out, or drive up with this loud music. We want little corner grocery stores. We don't want nuisances on our corners.
All right. Thank you. We will, I also ask everyone in the chambers and gallery to join me in a moment of silence for Muhammad Ali and also Ms. Betty Thompson's grandson, who was shot and killed. His father was a friend of mine, and it was just sad and heartbreaking to see that happen in our city this week. So, could everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand, please stand for a moment Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Very quickly, I wanted to announce a couple of things. The first thing is, I would like to schedule a rules meeting for next Wednesday, June fifteenth, at ten-thirty. I'd also like to recognize one of my churches for their community picnic tomorrow in Chambers Park. I have a lot of churches who have decided to come to the streets, and they've been doing a marvelous job by providing community activities, and men actually walk in the streets, talking to people, engaging them in what their needs are, and so I appreciate them, and I wish them well on their day tomorrow. Also, I wanted to tell my residents in the southern part of my ward, Tiffany Neighborhood, Botanical Heights, Gate District West, which is close to there, and my portion of Shaw, we have free food service every day between one and two, and they'll make like three stops in the area. We have signs posted where the stops will be. You don't have to have any kind of I.D. We don't want to know nothing about you, just come and eat, bring your family, whatever. We're also going to be starting a summer camp on July eleventh, and I got to repeat this over and over again to get people ready for it and get them to come and sign up. And that will provide them with three meals a day, so breakfast, lunch, and a dinner around five-thirty. So what we're trying to do is just to get close to people and hopefully improve their lives. But my last thing is, I must recognize one of our loyal assistants. Tomorrow's Tracy Phillips' birthday. She's a Gemini along with, we got a lot of Geminis around here. But I have to say something because we are blessed that we have people who support us and work as hard as they do to make us look good. I don't take all the credit on no given day. They make us look good. And for her most especially, she brought a lot of talent to this body from her previous experiences. And so when I think about Tracy, she's creative, she's efficient, she's quite witty, as all of us know, and she's extremely dedicated to all the persons that she serves and to the citizens of St. Louis. Happy birthday, Tracy.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth also has a birthday coming up, is Tuesday the fourteenth, so let's give her a round of applause for her birthday. Happy birthday, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the sixteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would just like people to know that Saturday is the St. Gabriel's Parish Picnic, and all funds raised help with the school. And one other item, on Wednesday, June eighth, my husband and I celebrated our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary.
Excellent.
So for anyone who has not met my husband, you can refer to him as Saint David.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
All right. Let's try this again. I move that we excuse the following Alderman from the fourth and from the fifth ward.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, entertain the second on that motion, second by Alderman from the nineteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. We'll have to take up, while I'm putting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right. Alderwoman from the first, you had a question?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on the motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn till Friday, June seventeenth, ten A.M.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we stand adjourned.